Welcome once again to our city council meeting. What I would like to do is, first of all, ask everyone to stand up for a moment of silent meditation. I would like to ask Councilor Naida Aquino to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Council Vasquez.
Present.
Council LaPlante.
Here.
Council Toomey.
Here.
Council Reyes.
Present.
Council Almonte.
Here.
Council Aquino.
Present.
Council Bernal.
Present.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
And Council President Madestel Madalena.
Present.
Think we have the list of public.
What do you did? Uh-uh. You in trouble. It's canceled.
Yeah, it's best.
Good job!
Yay!
You're hired.
Did you tell me you were technician?
We're gonna move right into public participation, uh, I'm sorry, the minutes. Let's, uh, can I enter turn a motion to approve the minutes of September 16?
So move.
Second.
That's the executive session, I'm sorry, of September 16 and also the council minutes of October 21st.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor.
Discussion.
It has been properly seconded, yes, discussion.
This is for the executive session?
The minutes of the executive session that we had.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, there's just a couple of, um, questions that I have, 'cause, um, I can't even say it, right, 'cause it's not public until we vote on it. Yeah, so there's a part that was attributed to me that, um, that wasn't me. That's it.
Okay, uh, will we make that correction on the, on those minutes?
Yes, if you communicate that to me, I'll make that correction. All right, thank you. Ask corrected.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, uh, it has been properly seconded, asked, corrected, and again, we are talking just the correction on the executive session minutes. Let's take a vote, who in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. We're gonna go into public participation, Mr. Russell. We need somebody, uh, ju- just give me one second, Mr. Russell. We need somebody to, uh, are you gonna take care of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good to go. Okay. Good evening, panel, this is Nick Russell, and I'd like to introduce you to see. Usually I don't talk about things that I experience in my work environment, but tonight I will. This is to reference the tragic death of the, uh, young girl last week in the railroad. CDs?
I got a big voice anyways, does matter. Uh, those are badges that have been issued to me by Yamtrack and MBCR that prove that I have undergone sufficient training to be on the railroad property and around their equipment. Even with this training, I am required to have some of their personnel with me. For about ten of years of my almost fifty years as a surveyor, I have worked around various subway and track systems. A few quick questions for you people and the public. Do you know much a typical diesel electric engine weighs, locomotive weighs? About a hundred and fifty tons. Do you know how quickly they stop? Not quickly at all. Have you ever seen train wrecks or train acci- accidents? I have, they aren't pretty sights. The railroad companies will claim that they don't have the money to properly maintain the fencing around their property. We all know how tough it is, uh, to get them to fix grade crossings, uh, for example, down at Hafner's on South Broadway and down there at Haverhill Street just beyond West Street. My suggestion, have the city fix the fences and the pedestrian overpass, send the bill, send them the bill. Have our legal department find a law and charge them with violation of some safety law. The death of an individual because of neglect or lack of finances cannot be allowed to continue. The people injured or killed more often than not are the younger generation who seem to have a "nothing bad can happen to me" complex. That this is the generation we are trying to improve things for, right? A lot, it's, it is sad that a lot of actions by authority figures are reactive as opposed to proactive. It's time to start doing something about it. One other thing relating to your meeting in the committee of the hall. How many times you gonna beat this dead horse, the residency requirement? The huss is dead, you're ready to push it into the grave and bury it, and still you're gonna do mouth-to-mouth resuscitation on it. Is this a waste of our time or what? Come on. You guys voted no, you pulled, you pulled strings to get the damn thing done several times. The mayor doesn't wanna do anything with it, you're gonna go around him. It's a waste of time, waste of money, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mauley.
Good evening, honorable members. We, the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera hold MBTA accountable for sudden death of our angel, Genesis, from the Robert Frost School. We need to have a public hearing why the area of the death of our child has not protected as was in Portland Street. Mayor Rivera and his campaign promise of safe Lawrence only can be possible that if the city council and Mayor Rivera support our police department and the senior officer union. Our police department under the impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers and their union. Our city has been great city because of hard worker of DPW. Our DPW with the best leadership is the best in the nation. We demand of you support our DPW workers and their union. Our firefighters are the best and the brave union protect our citizen. Fire after fire, we need support of our firefighters and their union. Lawrence Public School with the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh move forward, and our children have the best public education. Turnaround plan has made positive changes. Citizens are behind our teachers and their wonderful union, thank you.
Uh, the next person line is, uh, Mr. D'Amico, Joseph.
Joseph D'Amico, 11 Laurentio Road. The reason why I'm here tonight is that a lack of communications. People cannot just put things on the website and think that people are gonna read it. Ninety percent of the people in the city doesn't even know we have a website. We gotta think about the water meters? No pa- no paperwork, you, all you do is receive a paperwork saying you need to change your meters. You got a CGBG grant proposal coming up? Nothing in there for the people themselves. We have money for special education, you have money for childcare, you have money for businesses, you have money for that. You don't have money or access for grants to get im- home improvements for the people. The city's median pay scale is under twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a sixty-two thousand people living here. They're not, they can't see anything, they can't read anything. They don't know where to get that information, they don't have the time to get that information. When the water mi- when the water bills came out, they should have been a letter stating reason why options the whole nine yards. When you decide to put in new parks and you get all this money from the CGB grants, what they were liable properties before that, they were tax rolls. Goes back thirty years, actually longer. The original gateway was supposed to, they were supposed to fix the alleyways in the city first, not make parks or anything else. And all this is information in the archives in Lawrence. I'm just letting everybody know information about it. The next times an ordinance comes through, read the fine print, find out if there are obstacles. That's all I'm asking. Look, do your homework upfront because by the time it gets signed off, before it gets signed off, I'm gonna try to make sure that I'm here for every ordinance meeting. Thank you.
Uh, councilors, before, uh, this concludes the, uh, first of all, public participation. Before we go into the public hearings, uh, there's a couple of things that I would like to get out of the way. Number one, uh, as you were made aware through an email that I sent you, a test message that I sent you, Comcast, uh, the Comcast contract is, uh, is due to be renewed. Ten year has gone by, believe it or not, and, uh, there were a couple of hearings conducted, but I guess nobody was aware of these hearings. And, uh, and none of us knew, from what I gather, that these hearings were conducted. I ask, uh, I ask, uh, Mayor Rivera to, uh, schedule another public hearing so that not only the council can participate, but also the audience that were not familiar with these hearings can come in and, uh, and talk about the contract, whether we should renew it or not. And if they have any complaints, obviously, they should come forward and talk about their good or negative experiences with Comcast. A hearing has been scheduled for November 24 at 6:00 PM. Okay? November 24 at 6:00 PM. Once we conduct this hearing, uh, the mayor is going to make a recommendation to the full council. So it is important that if you are interested as to whether this contract should be renewed or not and what conditions we should place on, on, on this renewal, it is important that you come to this particular hearing because it's gonna be only this parti- only this hearing, again, November 24 at 6:00 PM. The other thing that I wanted to get, I, I need to get a consensus, as you know, uh, and you have on your pa- you have received, your packages of the applicants for the city attorney's position. What I would like to get as a consensus simply is to see how many, uh, finalists do you want to interview out of all the candidates? Normally, the process is that the, uh, that the personal department is going to, uh, review all the applications and come up with five finalists. And then, uh, a subcommittee is supposed to review and interview those, uh, those five candidates and then recommend to the full council, uh, the fa- those finalists. And the, and again, what I would like to do is simply get a consensus as to many, how many out of the five you would like to get, uh, for interview, whether you want five, four, three, or two, whatever, you know, I, I, I simply would like to get a consensus as to how you would like to, uh, how many of the candidates you would like to interview. Is any, uh, any opinions on that? Yes?
Um, a lot of people, when they apply for a job, don't tell their current employer that they've applied and we have a stack of, you know, fifteen or so candidates, and I do think in fairness to those candidates, if they're not a true finalist, they're not someone that's giving the utmost serious consideration, it's not fair to them to bring the name out publicly because it will impact their... So my thought would be a smaller number, I'd say between three and five, I wouldn't go any higher than five, but I think three to five would be an appropriate range.
What I mentioned before is that the personal department is gonna come up with a recommendation of five based on the evaluation of meeting the qualifications.
Yeah.
And then, uh, a subcommittee, uh, and, and again, if any of you would like to participate in the subcommittee to interview those fives, uh, please let me know, okay? But again, uh, it, we will have the option of going all the way up to the fives or going down to one. So, uh, you are saying three to five?
Well, I wouldn't say any more than, I mean, I guess if, if the personals are already bringing it down to five, maybe we only bring the top two finalists public.
Okay.
Because I do think if there's candidates that aren't gonna get serious consideration, it's not fair to them to make their name so public, they're, it's gonna hurt them in their current employment if we don't considering them.
Okay. There's a suggestion that only two finalists out of the five be submitted to this full council. Are there any other opinions? Yes?
I'd go for three.
Huh?
I'd go for three.
Three, okay, two and three? Three?
Yeah.
Three?
Three.
Three.
Okay, so, it seems, uh, yes, I'm saying.
Three.
My question is, um... Things not working. My question would be, how do we go about determining which three? Do we have to do that publicly, or is that something that you're gonna do?
The three would be the subcommittee. The subcommittee will evaluate, interview five, and then recommend three based on a rating.
Okay, so we're asking the subcommittee to...
The subcommittee is going to interview five, is going to rate the candidates, okay? And then, uh, the highest numbers, the highest rating, the three highest rating will come to the full council.
Okay, fine.
Okay?
Yeah, 'cause I was saying, if we have to, you know, abide by the open meeting law when we will have to discuss it, but that, that makes a lot of sense.
Yes, yes.
It's just a committee making the recommendation to us.
Exactly.
And, uh, I agree with what's been said already, I echo the words of, um, Councilor Bernal that it, it makes sense to just go for the three. And, um, and to take it from there.
Yep. Uh, I had asked, uh, Mayor Rivera to be part of that subcommittee, and I also asked, uh, Councilor Bernard. So if there's anybody else, uh, that would like to be part of that, uh, subcommittee, please let me know.
The subcommittee is, if I understand, the subcommittee is gonna pick the...
The subcommittee is going to interview the five finali- the five, uh, candidates that are recommended by the personnel commi- by the personal department based on the evaluation of their qualification versus the job description.
Okay, and that's gonna, so it's gonna be a separate committee of how many to pick to interview?
Yes, the, the subcommittee is, how many, uh, there is no, there is no numbers, there's no, uh, requirements as to the numbers.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, so we have, uh, Alin, we have, uh...
I could be on it too.
Okay, so we have a total of five then, okay, excellent. So Councilor Toomey, uh, Councilor Alvarez, Councilor Bernard, and, uh, myself, and, uh, Mayor Rivera. Okay? Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, let's...
The president like to take document number 32514 off the table.
Uh, 32514 off the table.
Second.
There's, uh, motion has been made on properly seconded, who in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you for, uh, for this time. I, I want to take a time to actually acknowledge a transformative business individual in our city with this resolution, and I want to thank you all for being a part of signing this. I want to welcome you, Mr. Lapoli and your staff here this evening. So, without any further ado, this resolution is we, the members of this Lawrence City Council from the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby recognize Salvatore Sal Lapoli, Chief Executive Officer and owner of Lapoli Companies, and state as follows. Whereas Sal Lapoli grew up in East Boston, Mass. in the nineteen seventies and eighties and was one of six boys who were all brought up upon by parents who emphasized family values and hard work as the cornerstone and key to success. With a strong base, Sal began his journey of success at Chelmsford High School, where he became a football captain, continuing his education at Northeastern University with a full football scholarship, where he was the team captain in his senior year, and graduated cum laude with a degree in business management and a desire to start a business. Whereas Sal's vision, visionary ability as an entrepreneur took flight quickly by building several successful businesses from the ground up, founding Sal's Pizza as a retail and wholesale business, establishing Salvatore's Restaurants, Riverwalk Properties, and GNet Management. His innovative concepts and team building have created a culture of camaraderie and success, resulting in over two-hundred million dollars in capital raise through his various business interests. Whereas Sal's commitment to business is equal only by his commitment to the communities where he focuses on creating an atmosphere where people enjoy living and working. In Lawrence, the Riverwalk Complex includes education, medical, and renewable energy organizations and entrepreneurs. Sal also grew Lawrence's job base. In two thousand and three, Riverwalk housed thirty-five companies with six hundred employees. Today, Sal's investment in Riverwalk has resulted in two hundred companies employing over thirty-five hundred individuals. Whereas Sal recognizes the value of his employees and continually invest in employee improvement with workforce training grants providing over four hundred employees with corporate strategy training, English as a second language, and lean manufacturing concepts. Sal's accomplishments are well noted and recognized. He holds an MBA from the MIT Sloan School and is a recipient of numerous awards recognizing his achievements, including without limitation, the Boston Business Journal Under Forty Award, the Boy Scouts of America Distinguished Citizen Award, the two thousand and eight Enterprise Bank Entrepreneur of the Year, the two thousand and nine Small Business Administration Entrepreneur of the Year, the tw- the twenty-ten Ernst &amp; Young New England Entrepreneur of the Year, the two thousand and thirteen I Migliore Award, and the two thousand and fourteen Housing Families Outstanding Corporate Citizen Award. Whereas despite all his success and all endeavors undertaken, Sal remains humble and retains the unique tenacity to continue the pursuit of an entrepreneurial vision with a clear sense and appreciation for the challenges that are met with unshakable values based on a solid and immovable foundation in order to create jobs, make a difference in people's lives, and give everyone an opportunity to succeed. Wherefore, we, the members of Lawrence City Council for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby recognize and honor Salvatore Sal Lapoli for his vision, acumen, and success in business, community relations, and personal achievement for the benefit of our community, and hereby cause to seal the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed hereto this fifth day of November in the year two thousand and fourteen and assigned by the entire Lawrence City Council. Thank you, Sal.
First of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody in front of me. You know, it feels like yesterday, but eleven years ago, I was lucky enough to come to the city of Lawrence, and I say it just like that, lucky enough. Because with Sal's Pizza, we were in over forty different communities, and every time we went in front of a community, I was the one who represented my company. Sometimes there's lawyers or engineers or people that go in front, and they become the face of the person they're representing. Every community I went in front of, I was the face. I wanted to connect and make people understand that I wanted to become part of their community. Now, in some instances, I couldn't buy the property, which instantly makes you part of that community or part of that fabric. So many of the times that we had a lease, but every time I went, I was the face. And I looked the city councilor, the planning board, or the zoning boards in the eyes, and I told them what my vision is and what I wanted to do. But what's important is, when I came to the city of Lawrence with a vision, some say back then, you have to wind the clock back, because now that if you come down on Merrimack Street, you see some wonderful hundred-and-twenty-year-old buildings. But eleven years ago, those buildings were empty. Eleven years ago, some of those buildings didn't have roofs on them. Eleven years ago, those were the buildings with the big red X, fire department, police department. Please do not go in if these buildings, God forbid, caught on fire. But today, what do they represent? They represent new beginning, they represent jobs, they represent a passion that our family, our organization, has to the city of Lawrence. So, this is really, although I think this is a wonderful opportunity to receive such a prestigious award, I think it's a great opportunity for my organization to thank the city of Lawrence. I think so many times, the city of Lawrence, because it's an urban city, sometimes doesn't get the respect that it deserves. It's very hard to be in an urban city, and I was born in an urban city, born in East Boston. People don't appreciate the hard work that everybody in the community does. They have a tendency to pile onto bad things or, or things that might not be going the right way. But let me tell you some of the things that are going the right way down at the Riverwalk or what the Lapoli Companies believes in for the city of Lawrence. As a result of the city of Lawrence embracing our family. Well, imagine, I have to correct you a little bit, because the newest numbers are over four thousand people now work down at Riverwalk. Over two-hundred million dollars in investment down at Riverwalk with various companies. Some of the biggest companies in the world now work down at Riverwalk. We did a census not too long ago, and sometimes people, I don't know what the words are, you know, we could, we could sumai some of the characteristics that some people have of Riverwalk. You know, not too long ago, everybody was a, was a great cheerleader. Now, sometimes people look at it from other communities and think, maybe Lawrence or that part of the area get a little bit too much. But here's a simple fact, over thirty percent, thirty percent of the people down on the Riverwalk properties either live or have a home or work from the city of Lawrence. And what I mean to say is, these are Lawrence residents that work down at Riverwalk. That's a staggering number, that's a staggering number. You know, what, what can we do to give back? And I think if you're in a position to give back to a community that gave you so much, and make no mistake about it, Lawrence gave the Lapoli family, the Lapoli Company so much, then you're obligated to in some form or sense. That could be an outreach, that could be hours that you donate, uh, a week to mentor, that could be just, it doesn't necessarily always have to be money. We put the auxiliary police station, they needed a home, they had no place to go, we put it down in, uh, one of our buildings. We paid for the build-out, we paid for the complete infrastructure, we paid for all the utilities. They have a zero expense to be down there, they have a great home down there. One of the other things that we just recently did, because we believe in what the city council and Mayor Rivera believes, which is how do we revitalize downtown Lawrence? Lapoli Company stepped up, we invested over four hundred thousand dollars into Common Street, the pizzeria in the Politano location. We even created a new brand, not to confuse people with Sal's Pizza or Salvatore's. What can we do down on Common Street to create jobs? Well, we created a new brand, a different menu, a very localized menu. It's really a blend of Italian and Latino mix, and we're most proud of that. We're most proud of the ten jobs that we created, all of them local. We're most proud of the amount of money that we invested in downtown and tried to spearhead other companies to come down. If we can do it, why can't you do it? Some of the other things that we did that we're very, very excited and proud about, we have a foundation, it's called the Lapoli Family Foundation. That foundation, now please understand, we're in, we're now in over forty different communities. And we're in communities, we're proud to tell you, over twenty-four years, almost twenty-five years. We picked the city of Lawrence, we picked the Lawrence General Hospital, and our family decided to contribute over a quarter of a million dollars to the Lawrence General Hospital for the pediatric center. And we believe in that for one reason, new life. I, I was fortunate enough to be blessed to have a father on this earth for sixty-one years, a mother for seventy-five, and a brother, James, for forty-two. So with that, we decided as new life comes on, sometimes we, we lose life. So we could have went to a lot of different communities, we chose the city of Lawrence because of how well we've been received and how lucky we are to be in your community. One of the other things I want to talk about is what we do with the schools. We partnered with the Boston Celtics, and the Boston Celtics allow us to pick four communities where they bring their professional athletes down, and it's specifically targeted to kids, schools. And we picked last year the Tarbuck School, this year we picked South Lawrence School. Out of all the communities that we're in, hundreds and hundreds of schools, we decided to pick the Lawrence schools where we would be able to contribute over four thousand dollars along with the Celtics. It's such a wonderful day, the Celtics come, uh, they, they do a dunking contest, you know, that halftime where the, um, Lucky does flips and he dunks the basketball. The kids get a big charge of it. We're allowed to speak to the kids, we talk about education, the value of school. We also talk about respect for each other, and we... also talk about respect for each other, and we talk about how important it is to have three to five meals a day. So, that could have never happened if 11 years ago, this city councilman, I see some familiar places, faces, and other, they're new, but it really doesn't matter because you all had the same opinion of Sal's or the Lapoli Companies. I'd really feel comfortable that this board 11 years ago would have did the same thing that that board did, which is allow us to come into your community. Our company is blessed to be in the City of Lawrence. We are one of the biggest cheerleaders outside the City of Lawrence when we're in other communities. We talk about it, we just recently won a national award, the Neder Award, which is, they take 11 states throughout the entire country and they find the best project. We went against projects that were in the billions of dollars, and Riverwalk Properties won it because of the difference in the impact we made on people as a result of the administration, the first administration, Mayor Rivera's administration, and we really are proud to be here. So, on behalf of my entire company, on behalf of my organization and my family, I want to thank you. We do have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Pizzeria Napolitana. It's right down here on Common Street, right next to the bookstore where Northern Essex Community College built their new building. I think that's tomorrow between 5:00 and 5:30. Victor's the manager of that location right now, and Victor wanted to come here and tell you. It's between, what time, Victor? 5:00 to 7:00 tomorrow, we invite the whole community down for free food and free refreshments. But once again, I think if you went into that store, you'll see that store could be on Newberry Street and you wouldn't know the difference because that's what the City of Lawrence deserves. Just because it's an urban city and just because it's a working-class community doesn't mean that it can't have the best and the finest things that the City of, of Boston or the state of Massachusetts have. So, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the opportunity, thank you for this wonderful award. If there's anything I could ever do for this community, I'd be happy to. I have a, have a little gift that the City of Lawrence has mentioned. I wrote a children's book, and I, and I give it away to kids in school. I actually bring the book to school and I read to the kids. And a big part of the book is Riverwalk Properties. So, I hope you don't mind, it's a children's book, I, I signed a copy, I'd, I'd like you to read it. A lot of it has to do with Lawrence and our family values and what Lawrence has given us, so if you could just pass them out.
I went to Napolitana already, and the food was great.
Oh, thank you very much.
We're going to move into public hearings. Okay, let's move into public hearings, Document 30514.
Document 3052014 in Council, October 21st. Notice is hereby given that the City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 5th, 2014, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. at 7:00 p.m. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following new paragraph to Section 1036340 regarding handicap parking to be inserted in proper order Salem Street, North Side from .75 feet westally of the intersection of Shoshine Road to a .95 feet westally of the intersection of Shoshine Road. To the extent there exists any other ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published October 28th, 2014.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against Document 30514, Handicap Parking for Three Salem Street? If there's none, councilors?
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve Document 30514, it has been properly second, discussion. If there is none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, Document 31014.
Document 3102014, notice is hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 5th, 2014, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the City of Lawrence to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the municipal code concerning stop signs and to be inserted at the proper alphabetical, in the proper alphabetical order, Essex Street northbound and southbound drivers on Essex Street at the intersection of Warren Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published October 28th.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf or against this Document 31014, stop sign on Essex Street at Warren Street? If there is none, Madam Chair of the Audit Committee, I believe we have, we have a recommendation from Officer Scanlon regarding this document.
Thank you, Council President. Officer Scanlon actually recommended against the item. He felt that having people stop on a severe hill would be very dangerous, especially in the wintertime, and it's already a two-way stop going in the opposite direction, be kind of creating a four-way stop. He felt that increasing the stop line, and, you know, sometimes he put the stop line out and then mark it ahead, like stop ahead kind of thing. He felt that reemphasizing the stop signs that are already there and maybe one of the signs he felt was a little bit faded, maybe putting up a fresh sign with the new reflective materials might be more eye-catching, but he recommended against actually adding another stop sign to that intersection.
Okay.
I know that the applicant, Mr. San, Mr. Matos was invited, I don't think he's here with us, though.
No, he's not.
He is.
I'm sorry, yes.
Discussion.
Let me entertain a motion, either for or against a motion on this document.
Sure, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve.
Second.
It has been properly second, discussion.
Yes, I don't remember Warren Street or Essex Street being steep, is it steep that there creates a problem?
There's a slope coming from Essex Street down east, from west to east. Warren Street, I believe there is a garage right of the corner of SS and, and Warren. And, and again, the, the opinion of the officer is that when the traffic is coming from west to east down the slope, in the wintertime, that it would be...
It's harder to stop?
Yeah, that would be very hard for them to stop.
Because I know that, that, that area there is, is dangerous, and people have had quite a few, you know, I wish we had the number of traffic accidents that have taken place there. And the church is there too, and, you know, kids go back and forth. For that purpose, I would like to see, you know, some way of controlling the, the traffic, and maybe that's why it occurred to former Council President Moran to look into trying to put a stop sign there. But if what the officer is saying is true, I don't remember it being that steep, but you're saying that as it goes down, it, it has momentum and it's...
When you're coming down from, on SS from west, from west to east, yes.
So, can we currently have stop signs facing Warren Street?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, the recommendation of the officer is that we put more reflective...
I actually have his report.
Times? That makes sense.
What he said was, that he, officer spoke with the DBW, and he suggested having new stop signs posted with a highly visible fluorescent pedestrian crosswalk sign also posted, and having the crosswalks there repainted, placing the stop sign at the intersection would cause major motor vehicle accidents in the winter due to the hill on Essex Street. The federal guideline in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices state that a stop sign should not be used as a speed control device. I recommend not posting a stop sign on Essex Street and Warren Street.
Yeah, and maybe putting the, the speed board for a while could help if it's speeding that people are concerned with. I'm concerned that there's been a lot of, you know, accidents there, and because of the number of children, they have youth programs that attend the, the church there. I'm, I think it's a good idea to fresh paint everything. I mean, we, we did that in the past, and that seemed to have improved things, but if you go there now, you can't really see the, the traffic control mechanisms that are there. The painting and maybe adding the speed board for a while to try to control the people coming up or down. Thank you.
Counselor Aquino?
Thank you. That's part of my district, I pass by every day to drop off my kids to school. It's one block ahead from Gilmet School. The main problem there, it's that people park too close to the corner. When you're on Water Street, you're not able to see the cars that are coming from Essex Street, so you try to, like, forward, and then that's what the problem is. There isn't, that area, they have like a lot of, there's a grocery store, the church, and also a mechanic shop. Sometimes they have like the big trucks, and they park way too close to the corner. I think it would be a good idea if we put signs that says not to park to the corner, like on the corner, and also, I, I think that's the main problem. I have talked to Mr. Matos, and I asked him to come tonight, that way we can hear from him because I know he lives close by, but that's my suggestion for them.
I believe that we have a similar, a similar situation on Park and Spruce Street, and in my discussion with Officer Scanlon, I think that reducing the, putting a space for no parking on the corners and doing the more clear marking, I think probably will help to solve the problem.
Yes.
So, that's something that probably the Madam Chair of the Audit Committee and I probably can communicate with, to Officer, Officer Scanlon.
I think maybe to Mr. Asensio in the DBW.
Yes, yes.
And just to, if I may, Council President, with your authority, just share that, you know, I just received an important text from State Representative Moran, and he's just making us aware that the painting has already been done. Still, there were two very bad accidents there not too long ago.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm thinking maybe we need to take another look at what can be done, because if the painting has been done and now there's two more accidents and pretty bad ones, then I think we need to, to check into this further. There's got to be maybe other ways that, that we can, you know, make it safe for people to use that road.
Okay. Madam Chair of the Audit Committee, would you like to withdraw your motion or maybe table it so we can discuss further? Just give me one second to discuss.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion, if people want to leave it open while they have their discussion.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. President. I remember when I first joined the Council about three years ago, we had a similar discussion at the intersection of Hampshire and Arlington Street in which the, the officer actually suggested we didn't place a stop sign there. Prior to having, you know, a four-way stop, there was multiple accidents. Ever since we've placed it, we haven't had one accident, and hopefully there wouldn't be any accidents coming forward in the future. I'm a big supporter of strengthening our, our street safety, particularly stops, with stop signs, because that, that's a way to, you know, remind drivers. I know that he's suggesting that that would not slow the, the speed at which a driver's going, but I do think that it's a way to let them know, look, you have to be cautious. I do favor this particular request. We have a church, as has been mentioned, the Gilmet School, as Counselor Aquino mentioned, is only a block away, and the Bruce School is also a block and a half away from that particular site. The slope is not that deep. If a vote is not to be taken today, I will request Counselor Vernal to, you know, or possibly table the, the document today and, and send correspondence again to Mr. Matos and hear his concerns, but I do favor having a four-way stop at this location.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Yes, Counselor.
Thank you.
Right, yes.
But since we heard that Counselor Distri reporting that it's a problem, and we hear from others, I don't think it's going to hurt just to place a stop and just to delay this more, since we know this is, this is one of the problems that we need to face. So, anything that we can approve, we still can go back and remove if it doesn't make sense, but for now, I'm in favor just to approve this because we know it's a problem. And since the paint has been repainted, so it's nothing else that we have left and that we haven't tried. So, why we don't do, why we don't go ahead and approve it and just to see what's going to happen, since we all heard that it's a problem in the area.
Council President?
Counselor Monte?
Thank you. I think that, like, if you, the whole thing in that area is that the, the road is narrow, number one. You have parking on both sides, and also there's a nursing home that's right there also, right before that, there's the laundromat that goes in on the side behind the nursing home. There is the garage, there is a store, and there is the church. On the way down, coming down, it's going to be very difficult. We already have a problem sanding our hills, and on the way down, it's going to be very difficult for those cars to stop if we put a stop sign there. On the way up, I think it would be a little easier because you're at the very bottom before it starts to slope up, but coming from the top to, once that gets slippery, and what's that's going to cause, if you, if you think about it, that being narrow, there being cars parked on both sides of the street that I believe could cause a bigger, you know, bigger situations if you're coming on the way down that hill. I mean, that would, to me, it would have to be a different situation, like maybe that there be no parking in those corners, just to do some type of visibility, give the, you know, the option of a little bit of visibility. Then the other thing that we have to think about too is the, the sun glare. If we start putting, you know, stop signs there with the sun glare and everything else, when the sun starts to come up and we have the glare coming from the, from the ice and snow, that's going to cause problem there also. So, I don't know, I think it's something that maybe we should table and take a look at, instead of just approving, something that we're going to put in the books to have to remove it, I think it's something that should be studied a little further, just so that we're not revisiting things that we're voting on and then it, they're not going to work, you know, I think that would be just... Basically like a waste of time to put something up that maybe not, thank you. I'm all set.
Counselor Aquino?
Thank you. I would feel more comfortable if we tabled the item, we try to find out what, way it works better for us, and I think by putting no parking in the corner, it will work. I would like to try that first, and then we come back and see how it works.
Yes, Council President, again, the, the painting was done, bigger stop signs were placed there, I just want to emphasize that, and I don't, I don't have the exact date, but I guess I can get that for you.
I will say, Officer Scanlon is usually really good about, on his reports, he usually writes those X number of accidents.
Yeah, but I... I'm sorry, I have the floor, so I just want to, just want to end, end my, my thought, because if not, I lose it. As I was saying, I want to emphasize that those things did happen. Again, Representative Moran has, has kept an eye on that, on that area, and the other issue that I, that I want to remind people is that it is a state law already that you're not supposed to...
20 feet.
It, what is it, park 20 feet to the, so maybe we can just get right now, DPW, we don't have to have a public hearing on that. DPW put no parking 20 feet from the corner, and maybe putting a yellow line to emphasize that. So, you know, if the, if, before we table, if that's where we're going to go, I want to make the motion that, that we ask DPW to... um, I want to, um, make the motion that, that we ask DPW to do that.
Well, there's a motion on the floor first that we need to handle. Uh, Madam Chair of the Audit Committee, uh,
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
You wanna withdraw your motion? Okay. Is there a motion to table this matter?
Uh, before you table, please, I'd like to make a motion that we ask, uh, DPW, um, the Office of, uh, the Department of Public Works to go out to Essex Street in Warren and put up a sign, no parking twenty feet from the corner and possibly even painting a yellow line for emphasis.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to send communications to DPW.
Second.
Uh, your second motion? It has been properly second. Discussion?
And that's, I'm sorry, and that's gonna be for the corner of Essex going into Warren?
Warren.
And from Essex coming down on the other side?
I think it should be for all sides.
For sides, yes.
Yeah.
All corner.
The guy from the store is probably gonna, that's probably the only parking that he hands for his store, so maybe somebody would like to.
But it has to be.
Yeah, well, but that's the law. I don't, I mean, he, he probably, um, people have probably gotten away with parking there, but the law is you're not supposed to park, you know, twenty feet from the corner.
And for, I'm sorry.
Within the twenty feet.
For that business, we approve a fifteen minutes, or two fifteen minutes, um, parking. So it's still, they still have to, uh, they still have to respect the twenty feet from the corner.
Exactly.
Yes. So, we're good.
There's a motion on the floor to send communications to DPW. It has been properly second. Uh, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Motion to table?
Second.
There's a motion to table, uh, this document, Document 31014. Who seconds the motion?
I did.
Okay, motion has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, Document 32314.
Boy, who's going crazy?
323. Document 323, 2014, notices hereby given to the City Council. Will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 5th, 2014, in Council Chambers, 200 Carmen Street, Lawrence, at 7:00 PM. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence by adding following new paragraph to the municipal code concerning taxi cab stands to be inserted in proper order. Parish Road, north side forty feet, easterly of the intersection of Crawford Street. Actually, uh, North Parish Street, excuse me, uh, fif- forty, North Parish Road, excuse me, north side from a point forty feet easterly of the intersection of Crawford Street to a point ninety-five feet easterly of the intersection of Crawford Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published October 28th.
Is one, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against Document 32314, the taxi stand?
Yeah.
If there is none, uh, councilors?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve this document. It has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, Document 32414.
Document 324, 2014, notices hereby given to the City Council. Will hold a public hearing Wednesday, November 5th, in Council Chambers, 200 Carmen Street, Lawrence, Mass, at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following new paragraph of the municipal code concerning parking prohibited at certain times, uh, at, on certain streets at all times, to be inserted in proper order. Chicaring Street, east side from a point seven hundred and forty feet northerly of the intersection of Winthrop Ave to a point eight hundred and fifteen feet northerly of the intersection of Winthrop Ave. And further amending the code by deleting the following section under the same section. Chicaring Street, east side from a point seven hundred and seventy-four feet northerly of the intersection of Winthrop Ave to a point eight hundred and forty-five feet northerly of the intersection of Winthrop Ave. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published October 28th.
Is there any, anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf or against, uh, Document 32414? If there is none, councilors?
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve Document 32414. It has been properly second. Discussion?
I would like to hear a little bit about, um, i- if they can describe where the parking would be. Anybody who's familiar?
I think it was kind of in the clerk's, um,
We have what's in here?
Public notice, but yeah, basically the police department that functions at the high school is trying to just monitor the traffic flow a little better. So they created the prior document, which is a taxi stand, kinda moving the taxis just slightly down the street, but giving them a distinct place that they can go to, um, and then opening up some parking on the street. Um, again, basically to get the cars off to the side and just open up traffic flow at the high school. So, um, this was specifically put through by the officers that are at the high school. This was their recommendation. Um, and the, the meets and bounds are on there. I don't know how to better describe. But basically this was recommended specifically by the police officers who are working at the post after school dismissal, trying to clear up traffic up there. They, they felt that these two items together would help them, so we supported it, yeah.
Yeah, it is a madhouse. I remember when I used to pick up my son. Um, thank you so much for the information.
Okay. Uh, let's, there's a motion on the floor. It has been properly second. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Tumi, do you have a motion for 360, Document 36814?
Yes, I do. I would like to make a motion to table this, uh, 36814 until we can set up at more appropriate time.
Motion has been made and properly second to table Document 36814. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, let's go into committee reports. Uh, Madam Chair of the Personal Committee? Document 33614.
We have Document 33614, which is appointment to the Cultural Council of Ms. Tara Mojica. And this is for a three-year term and this is an open seat. And that was sent up with a unanimous favorable, favorable recommendation and I make that in form of a motion. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Uh, Ms. Mojica, why don't you come forward so that the other councilors that haven't met you can see you and, uh, if, are there any questions for, uh, Ms. Mojicas?
Just Council President, just tell us a little bit about, you know, what you, what's your interest in this, um, commission?
Sure. Um, so my main interest in the Cultural Council, um, stems from just my personal experiences in the Lawrence community. I feel that, um, Lawrence is unique in the sense that we have our own, the city has its own identity, um, regardless of the different, um, ethnic backgrounds that comprise our community. Everyone can, um, if it is understood and everyone has pride in their community and the background of our city, um, I think it is a unifying factor. That's the main reason why I wanted to be appointed to the Lawrence Cultural Committee.
Well, I just want to put, uh, um, something in your mind. Uh, one of the things that I've been wanting to see in the community is a way of showing off that we have an Asian community as well as a Latino community and Anglo-American community, you know, um, and Y ethnic community. So it would be great to, to kind, kinda come up with some kind of event or something. Even when they do the tours, um, I know that we do tours based on, on the Bread and Roses, you know, based on that history of Florence. But present history has a lot to say too, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think that, um, what makes Lawrence unique is that although we're all very different, um, almost everyone comes to the city with the same, for the same reasons, searching for the same things. Um, and it's something that's been, um, in our city for, since its inception. So that's something we should be part of and we should celebrate and use it to unite the community, um, instead of separating.
Yeah, cause I would like to see more of the Vietnamese, um, businesses thrive. And I think that, um, in Haitian businesses thrive. I've seen some people start very enthusiastic and, and, and then it doesn't quite pan out the way they want. But I think if we share more of our cultures and people knew that they exist, it would probably work out.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you so much for wanting to be a part of our city in this way.
Oh, I'm very proud. I'm very proud to be from Lawrence, so I'm glad, um, to have the opportunity even to be in front of you all today.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor and it has been properly second. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Ms. Mojica.
Congratulations. Next document on the agenda is Document 33714, which is the appointment to Lawrence Historical Commission of Mr. Chadwick Montrie. Mr. Chadwick, uh, this appointment will be for the balance of a three-year term previously held by Mr. Victor Martinez. Mr. Martinez recently resigned from the board. This came up with a unanimous favorable recommendation and I make that in form of a motion. Second.
There's a motion on the floor and it has been properly second. Is any of the councilors would like to ask any questions for Mr. Monte?
Congratulations.
If there is none?
Congratulations.
Uh, maybe you can talk to us a little bit about your interest in the historical commission?
Sure. Well, I'm an historian. I teach at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. And since I came to take that job in 2002, I've been very interested in how cities in the Merrimack Valley, Lowell but also Lawrence and other towns, um, interpret and protect their heritage. And, um, I think that's sort of where my skills are and I'm a Lawrence resident. So I feel like the sort of the two go together and it's just sort of a way to sort of exercise my civic responsibility or, or sort of address that.
Well, thank you very much. And, um, I guess you, you must have scrinched when I said present history instead of recent history, but, um, I'm glad that we have someone of your, you know, qualifications and, uh, helping us out. And thank you very much for, for applying and, and for wanting to do this work.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor and it has been properly second. Uh, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Montrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Next document on the agenda is Document 33814, which is the appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Ms. Sheila Corsaro, Ms. Corsaro. And this is for a three-year term. And this was also sent up with a unanimous favorable recommendation and I make that in form of a motion. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions for Mrs. Corsaro?
Just very quickly, tell us about your interest, yeah?
Well, I, ju- just the words, human rights, they're very powerful words. And I believe every individual in Lawrence has the rights to those words. And I would love to be able to advocate and have a, to have a voice for those people in Lawrence.
Thank you. There are a lot of people that go to that little office over there.
Pardon me?
There are a lot of people that come visit, you know, during the day to that little office that they have for the Human Rights, um, Commission. And it's great that, you know, do this kind of work. Uh, it'd be interesting, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor and it has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, let's go into, uh, Document 33914 through 35214. And that would be Mr. Chairman of the Housing Committee, Mr. LaPlante.
Document 33914, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send with a favorable recommendation. The acceptance of an easement for the intersection of Union Street and Canal Street for pedestrian improvements. And then there was a condition that the signature of the plan by the engineer, which has been satisfied, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Israel, second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions for Mr. LaPlante? If there is none, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. LaPlante, continue.
Uh, the Housing Committee, this is document number 34614.
195, uh,
I'm sorry, 195, my bad, 19508. Uh, the Housing Committee voted with accepted unanimous recommendation, with favorable recommendation to send document number 19508 disposition of Florence Street to Arneeta Aquino. Minutes here say for the sum of $22,500. I will amend that to be $5,700 and I make that in a form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly, uh, there is a second, uh, properly second. Uh, I assume, um, uh, Councilor Aquino, that you're going to abstain from voting on this matter? Okay?
I also, there was one thing that I don't have a copy of, but I've been assured by both the applicant as well as the housing expert that the application has been made in full, although I have not, I don't have it. I'm gonna rely on the, um, their word, uh, that that has been done appropriately. And so we'll move forward with that, um, with that vote.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve Document 19508. Uh, it has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Roll call?
Council Vesquez?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Tumi?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Almonte?
Yes.
Council Aquino?
Abstain.
Noted. Council Bernal?
Yes.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Council President Aldenaro?
Yes. Mr. LaPlante, Document 34614.
The Housing Committee voted with unanimous vote to declare the document.
Point of order?
Number?
Just wondering if we could take these as a block unless the head of.
Some of you want to refer back, so we don't, we shouldn't do that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Unless the head of housing knows that, um, within the block.
Mr. LaPlante?
I would recommend that we don't do that because there's a couple of them that I believe that you may want to refer back to the Housing Committee for disposition, so.
Okay. Continue.
So the Housing Committee voted with unanimous recommendation to send document number three, uh, Document 34614, which is 332 Havel Street, Havel Street, to declare it a surplus property and make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare, uh, surplus, uh, property 332 Havel Street. Uh, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Document 34714, Mr. LaPlante?
Sure, document number three, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send document number 34714 with a favorable recommendation. That is 11 dash 13 Doyle Street to declare it, again, surplus and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare surplus, uh, property 11 dash 13 Doyle Street. Uh, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
The Housing Committee voted to de, uh, with unanimous recommendation to send up Document 34814. Doc, uh, addresses 99 101 Franklin Street to declare that a surplus property and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare 99 dash 101 Franklin Street a surplus property. Uh, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
Uh, document number 34914, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send this document, which is based at 16 Broadway, uh, and to declare it a surplus and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare 16 Broadway Avenue as a surplus property. Uh, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I'm going to send this document back to the Housing Committee, 34914, uh, for disposition. I understand they have some buyers. Uh, continue.
The Housing Committee voted, again, by unanimous recommendation, to send document number 35014, which is 53 55 Basswood Street, to declare that a surplus property and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare 53 dash 55 Basswood Street into surplus property. Uh, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
The Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send document number 35114, which is 141 Hancock Street, and to declare it a surplus property and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made. Motion has been made and properly second to declare 141 Hancock Street a surplus property. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
The Housing Committee voted to send up with a favorable recommendation document number 35214, otherwise known as 1-3 Saunders Street, to declare it a surplus property. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare 1-3 Saunders Street a surplus property. Let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I'm also sending this document back, document 35214, back to the Housing Committee since there are, for disposition, since there are buyers interested in this property. Okay, thank you, Ms. LaPlante. Madam Chair, the Ordinance Committee, document 31914.
Thank you, Council President. I just, as a point of information or point of order, we do have memos from Officer Scanlon on these next three documents. And they're not in our packets. And I have them, I don't know if they didn't get to the clerk for some reason, which... But we do have memos from Officer Scanlon. I did talk with him. We had some concerns that we weren't getting full memos. So he's been great about doing that. So I just want to point that out. And I noticed that they're not in our packets. But now you do. Enjoy. Document number 319-14 is a handicap parking spot at 12 Butler Street. It was requested by Gabriela Batista. And this came up from the Ordinance Committee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to order document 31914 for a public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Similarly, document 320-14 was for handicap parking at 62 Congress Street. This was requested by Dorothy Battle and a Mark Battle. Again, this came up from the Ordinance Subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney's office. And again, I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to order public hearing for document 32014. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Document 321-14 was for handicap parking at 57 Railroad Street. This was requested by a Sarah Saldana. It was requested by Council Vasquez. It came up from the Subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney's office pending the receipt of the meats and bounds that the officer did not have with him at the night of the hearing. He was going to try to file those with the city clerk, if not by today, by tomorrow. So clerk, if you don't have that yet, let me know and I'll remind him. But we didn't have the meats and bounds. So it came up with a unanimous favorable recommendation pending receipt of those measurements.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
Document number 331-14 was requested for transient vendor license at 6 Tree Top Way in Methuen. This is requested by Peter, excuse me, George Peter Abu Kalil. This is different than the prior transient vendor licenses that we've been dealing with, where it's food sellers from a truck. This is actually a gentleman who sells custom sweatshirts from his car, which is decorated so that it looks unique. It's very different than anything we've dealt with before. So we did ask for a recommendation from Mr. Pat Ruiz in Inspection Services. I'm almost thinking this might be the kind of license that you get from the police department, like when Verizon goes door-to-door for sales. They have to have a special door-to-door license from the police department. So we moved to, we don't have the feedback from Inspection Services tonight. So based on that, I told Mr. Kalil to go home. And I motioned to table the item till we get that feedback. But I did want to point out to folks that this is not a standard transient vendor license.
So the motion is to table.
Second.
Motion has been made to table document 33114. It has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 344-14 is a disclosure for municipal employee for financial interest in a municipal contract. This is Captain Frank Martin from the Lawrence Fire Department. Annually, Captain Martin has filed this. I know the last five years that I've been here, he's filed this consistently. And basically, it allows him to snowplow as a city employee. I did have a conversation with Captain Martin today. He is on duty tonight. That's why he's not here. But what he did want me to just point out to the other councillors is that he only takes snowplowing jobs when he's not scheduled to be firefighting, that he does not switch shifts, which would actually cost the city money. We have submarine covering for him, you know, someone's doing overtime so that he can be out snowplowing. He says he does not, he makes a very strong practice never to do that. And he did want to make sure that the council was aware of that. So this has been passed the last four or five years in a row. And he's complying with state law by disclosing this to us. So I made, it came up from the Subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 354-14 is the Gladiators Athletics. This is a local indoor football league. They've done a lot of great things with the kids from Lawrence. This is at least their second or third request to do the annual fundraising roadblock. Last year, they had it at two locations. This year, they're just having it at one location. It's going to be on November 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the corner of Broadway and Manchester Street. This is requested by Sammy Figueroa, sorry. Figueroa. And Mickey Caban, two representatives from the association were here this evening. But their children are playing in a championship game tonight, and they really wanted to be there to support them. So we told them to please go, be with the kids. That's what this is all about, is to benefit the children. And it had come up from the Subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve. And I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
And the final is document number 356-14 is handicap parking to be removed at 18 Bailey Street. The person that had the handicap placard has moved and has sold the house. And we're asking to remove the placard at this time. So it came up from the Subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order public hearing. And just a point of clarification from the clerk, do we need any language since we're just removing it?
I usually send it up.
Send it up, okay. Perfect. Can we send it to the city attorneys for any recommendation? And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Councillors, there are two documents that would like to entertain a motion to withdraw as a block 24410 and 35314.
Before we go ahead and do that, question about document 339-14.
339?
Yeah.
No.
Get it reported.
No, we are.
No, no, I know that.
We are looking at only a.
Before we go ahead and do the next section.
Okay. Can you hold then to the question?
Yes.
Again, there are two documents, 24414, 24410, and 35314. Can I entertain a motion?
Council President.
Withdraw.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to withdraw those documents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. All documents. All documents.
Council President.
Yes.
Document number 325 off the table one more time in order to withdraw it.
32514?
Yeah, that's the resolution. Just want to take it off the table for the purposes of drawing.
Okay. Motion to take it out of table matters. Document 32514, Israel, second.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to withdraw that document.
Second.
Motion has been made to withdraw document 32514. It has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, councillors, we have several documents. I'm sorry.
No, I'm clear.
Document, which one document?
Clear.
Okay. Those two documents, Ms. LaPlante. Those two documents, 18809 and 31414. Would you like to keep them in the agenda or withdraw those documents?
All documents.
All business.
I'm presuming it's on there to be sent back to the Ordinance Committee, excuse me, Housing Committee.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that you send that back to the, or to the Housing Committee.
Okay, I'm sending document 18809 and document 31414 back to the Housing Committee. Councillors, table matters. Are there any items there that you would like to withdraw? Please review those that you are, that you have sponsored, and let me know whether you would like to withdraw any of those items. Yes.
There's actually people following up on these things.
I'm sorry?
There are actually councillors working and following up on these things?
Well, that's what I'm asking. I know that, for example, I know the document 19714, we need to get an update on that. So we may want to, let me entertain a motion to take document 19714.
Second.
Out of table matters. Motion has been made and.
Second.
Properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Councillors, I would like to send a communication to National Grid, National Grid, so they can give us an update on how they are doing with the double poll situation.
So moved, Council President.
Council President, through you.
There's a motion first. One second, a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to send communications so that we can get an update.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I don't know if you're going to say, I don't.
Most likely was.
But you say it first.
Could we also send correspondence to the Community Development Department? Probably, I know Mr. McCabe is not there anymore. So maybe send it to Mr. Barnes? Because I know Mr. McCabe used to be the point person at that, when he was here.
Okay.
The other thing is, I was just going to, for the benefit of the clerk, the contact for community and customer management that we've been working with was a woman named Kathy Mower, M-O-A-R. I'm just going to say, if you'd send it right to her. M-O-A-R. Kathleen. Kathleen.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to send communications to National Grid and also to.
Mr. James Barnes.
Mr. Barnes. Okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Are you losing your steam? Motion to table document 19714.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any other documents, councillors? Probably we should send a communication to Mayor Rivera. Let me see, I think there's. Okay. Document 8414, probably we should withdraw the document, also because we have already addressed that matter.
Okay.
We are in the process of, okay, so can I take, can I have a motion to take document 8414 out of table matters?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Can I entertain a motion to withdraw document 8414?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Discussion?
It says here, status of the contract, executive session expected. Did we hold an executive session on this?
We already had the executive session.
On this particular item?
Yes. Yes, we did. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Then if the, let me go into new business. Ms. LaPlante, I understand there was a new.
The Council President, if.
That you want to take as an emergency.
Well, yeah, I want to, and it's my fault, and I apologize to you and to the members of the council. I should have put something on the agenda. I've known about it for some time. There's going to be a housing study that's already been initiated. And I should have put it on the council agenda. And I'm just going to request that we suspend the rules and put as an emergency, the Housing Committee study, the housing study that is being currently underway, so that we can have it at the November 17th meeting. So that's my motion.
There's a motion to suspend the rules and take document 37114 as an emergency. It has been properly second. Any questions or discussions? Councillors, this document has been assigned the number 37114. Okay?
And Council President?
There is a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second. Do you want to talk about the motion?
Yeah. Just very quickly, I think this is very exciting. You know, I'm really glad that our chair has moved on this. And I, many councillors asked to come, should come. Yeah. I mean, for a long time, I was trying to get the same thing done. And, you know, I didn't get the money to do it. But, you know, you succeeded, so.
I've got a money tree in my backyard. I just wanted also, just so we have expect, if it's okay with you, Council President, just so we're familiar with what this is about. And frankly, I invite all of the entire council to attend. This is Phase 1 of a two-phase process. What we're going to hear on the 17th of November is the data regarding our city as it relates to housing in comparison to perhaps other communities. And so we're going to get some information about our city. And it's going to be given to us in a Reader's Digest form so we can understand it. And that is going to be a presentation. And some members of the audience and any other interested parties can be here as well, with the purpose of having that being another meeting somewhere down the road within the next month or two, to then deal with what their recommendations are. So this is Phase 1, which is data, in a way that we can understand it and be able to discuss about it intelligently. So that's the purpose.
Okay. I'm going to be, oh, let's take a vote on the motion to take it, suspend the rules and take it as an emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I'm sending document 37114 down to the Housing Committee. Document 36314, all gold dealers and second-hand dealer licenses. I'm going to send this to the Ordinance Committee. Document 36414, Stop-Signak Knox Street and Cornish Street, Ordinance Committee. Document 36514, transient vendor license, Dolores A. Perez. I'm going to send this document to Ordinance Committee. Document 36614, surplus property, 5-7 Elizabeth Street, to the Housing Committee. Document 36714, appointment to the Lawrence redevelopment authority, Elias Rodriguez. It's going to go to the personal committee. Document 36914, loan authorization for $2,500,000 for public safety capital expenditures. This is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 37014, temporary vendor permit authorization by city clerk is going down to the Ordinance Committee. Councillors, are there any other topic?
Council President.
Any other concerns that you would like to talk about?
Any concern, I just want to, just to make sure we're clear on when the Housing Committee will be meeting next. Meeting next for the Housing Committee study, again, that's on November the 17th at 7:00. I will then ask the members of the committee if they'd be willing to come on the 24th to deal with the regular business. And I would do that after the Comcast meeting, and that's at 6:00 on the 24th.
Yes.
So I will technically schedule that for, at 7:30. Do you think we can have a meeting by 7:30 with that?
It all depends on the number of people that come and.
How passionate the conversation will get.
So we're going to schedule it for 7:30. If that's okay with the members of the committee. Excuse me, Council President. 7:30?
7:30 works.
7:30, 7:30, or whenever it finishes.
Okay. Okay. Madam Chair, the Ordinance Committee, we're meeting this Thursday.
I would like to, if that works for you.
It works for me. How about councillor?
It works for me.
Okay, great. And councillor Reyes, is it councillor Reyes?
Yeah, councillor Reyes.
Yeah, councillor Reyes. It works for you.
Vice Chair, by the way, yes.
Okay, great.
Vice Chair, that's right.
By the way.
You saw him.
Okay.
Mr. President, through you.
And so for personnel.
Any projections for the personal committee?
We're meeting on the 10th because we have that special thing that we're doing. And it's just, it's just a quick appointment. So I think we could take it on that day. And I don't think there should be a problem with taking it on that day. Our next full council meeting will be, what, the 18th?
Yes.
Correct? So, yeah, we could do it. We can either take it on the, yeah, so that way we're not back twice in a row. So I think on the 10th, we could do it on the same day that we're going to do the executive session.
Let me explain, the 10th, we, the personal committee is meeting to discuss strategies for possible litigation. And we're going to go into an executive session. I don't equate.
For which issue again?
Huh?
For which issue?
For what issue? Possible litigation on a former employee.
That's on our agenda, right?
Um, through you, Council President.
Yes.
Can I just make a public service announcement?
Yes, go ahead.
On Monday evening, November 10th at 6:00 p.m., the library's hosting, I wouldn't call it quite an open house, but they call it a literacy night. It's a good time to go in, to see all the good things that are at the library. They have people that help you get a library card if you haven't had one. It's not a good time to go check out books, but it is a good time. They have some stations, and they just kind of help people get more familiar with the library. It's kind of a neat thing that they do once a year, and it's the annual literacy night. It's next Monday, the 10th of November at 6:00 p.m., and the library will be closed for regular business at that time.
Thank you. Thank you.
What is it?
Are there any...
Veterans Day?
I'm sorry?
Veterans Day.
Oh, Tuesday, Veterans Day, yes.
Yeah, so there is a city event.
At 11:00 a.m. at the Korean War Monument right here.
Okay. Ms. Toomey?
Personnel meetings on the...
Korean War Monument, right here.
Personnel on the 10th.[1762.24]